I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Suzy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
Motion to approve consent agenda for tonight.
I make the motion.
Support that.
Alright, any discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes. Alright, citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
I'm Mr. Dill. Good evening, Perry Beecham, reside at 924 Riverside Drive. Just wanted to bring up a different, an idea to the council. We're visiting out in Denver and in the city of Denver, their water department subsidized or rebated back stools, toilets with low flow. And I don't know if the city's ever thought of doing something in that manner. Again, I know we've had issues of how much water we're treating and that type of thing. And if you look at the numbers, just throwing some numbers out there, if the city would look at some kind of program like that, it could greatly reduce the amount of water that's going into our sewer system. And it's not just little, I mean, at, if, if the city would looked at, you know, a thousand low-flow toilets flushed twice a day, just twice a day, that's close to, anywhere's depending on the size of the toilet that they have now, but that's anywhere's from sixty thousand to a hundred thousand gallons a month that the city could save. And so, again, just throwing that, I saw, observed the city of Denver doing that and just thought, oh, let's bring that possibility back to Lowell and see, you know, crunch some numbers and see if that would save the amount of water. And, and their philosophy was, the amount we could save, then we don't have to, same thing here, we don't have to add on or build on to it. If we can save, you know, a hundred thousand plus gallons a month, that's having to be treated. So, just wanted to throw that idea off. Thanks.
Thanks, Perry.
Yeah, Perry, I had also heard another city offering a brick campaign to put in the toilets so you're not using all three or four gallons. The, the brick would take up a volume of it, so therefore it would reduce the amount of water in the, in the toilet itself.
Is that only an actual brick in the bowl?
Yes.
Plastic brick.
Yes.
So, they used to do bricks and then they disintegrate.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
In the tank.
In the tank.
Yeah, yeah.
So, instead of three gallons, it'll maybe takes two and a half, so therefore reduces your water as well too.
Standard low flow is like, I thought the brick campaign was like, is one point six.
Six, yeah. I think that's kind of standard in new housings now too, pretty much. Is, is that, they offer that?
That's a good idea.
Is that something like you could reach out to them and see if, you know, what, would it all be tailored?
Yeah, either myself or somebody could do that.
Yeah. But just replacing the ones that are up there that are usually three gallons.
Somebody else. Nobody wants to try top fare. Old business, COVID, Mike.
The only thing to add with this is, June 30th, the state of emergency in Kent County will expire and we don't know if they'll extend it. My, my thought is regardless of they extend it or not, that we just end the Zoom component of the meetings. Because if, if they don't, if they don't extend the state of emergency, we can't go back to Zoom anyway. And if they do extend this state of emergency, we've had pretty full council meetings and I don't know if there's something you want to do, just to.
We'll capacity.
Yeah, that'd be low capacity, a little bit second tomorrow.
And we only get, how many we get on Zoom, three or four, for me?
Maybe, yeah. But we still, we have to do special notices for it and all that, so.
Is, is there an enormous cost other than some time that you just try?
Just work, us, they. Would, had to be done.
Would we continue doing Facebook Live?
I would, yeah, I would recommend that.
I think so.
Now, is there any point, did you continue, whether to use it or not?
Yeah, I don't foresee us going back to virtual meetings anytime, so.
Any other questions for Mike and David? Mike, you can, downtown bathroom.
Yes. As part of the showboat project, there were plans to construct downtown restrooms across from the showboat. We originally went out for bid for this project. The architect designed bid specs and the Lowell Bridge originally came in at approximately $367,000 to build a women and men's restroom, which was ADA compliant. At the time, I asked our architect if he believed this could be value engineered. He didn't believe he could. I also did not believe we had, at the time, the proceeds to build the restrooms from the showboat fundraising campaign. At the time, we received only bids from Orion Construction and Wolverine Building Group, both of which are design-build firms. I went back to them and requested if there were ways to construct a restroom and allow for future restorations, renovation surrounding it, cheaper than what was originally proposed, and both said yes. Therefore, I did not involve the architect any further and I went directly to the firms because both had the capability to handle it in-house. I told each of them to provide an estimate to build a durable municipal bathroom with no adornments and see how well they could get their price. The parameters were that the improvements would allow for future expansion until sustained long-term usage as a municipal restroom. Approximately one month later, I received bids from both firms. The quotes are from the following, Wolverine came in at $251,721.80. Orion Construction came in at $255,325. I met with both constructors and they, for the most part, designed the restroom specific to the original bed specifications. The savings mainly came from concrete furnishings. The original plan had called for the entire concrete floor of the restrooms to be removed so the plumbing could be replaced. Both firms provided estimates that cut trenches around where the underground plumbing and drainage was necessary. This significantly reduced costs. Also, the furnishings went from a Cadillac-style furnishing for a restroom to the Chevrolet-style furnishings. These two areas provided the most savings and if approved, both four works can begin work in July. Next question was how do we pay for this? I was able to meet with Liz Baker and review the revenues and expenditures for the showboat. When the vote is complete, there will be approximately $182,000 for the showboat with an additional $41,000 pledged. The showboat wanted to build up a hundred, a contingency of $100,000 for future needs. We'll most, we'll most likely be using this to assist with startup operational expenses until revenue begins coming in. After reviewing this, I proposed the following, and the problem would be use $100,000 for the showboat fundraising, $75,000 from the Downtown Development Authority and the remaining $76,721 from the funds received to the city from the American Recovery Plan. Since public housing is one of the qualifying uses for these funds, they can be utilized towards a municipal restroom. The Downtown Development Authority originally budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year $184,000 for the Amity Street project. And their, their estimated project costs were awarded at $103,000. There was also $25,000 for the Riverwalk Bridge product, brick product, and our bid came in at just over $10,000. So, the DDA has approximately, freed up approximately $96,000 in the upcoming budget to complete, complete this. And when I presented this to the DDA at their June 10th meeting, they approved the expenditure of $75,000. The mun, the municipal restrooms, I would argue, are and have been a necessity for downtown for many years. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council award construction of the restrooms to Wolverine Building Group and it costs not to exceed $251,721.80 in the matters I described. Should mention, I did talk to Jim Chambers today. There, no matter who, who you select, there's probably going to be a slight change in the, in the cost. We do have contingency built into this project. We built 10% contingencies, but materials, pricing for materials are changing every day. So, just wanted to let you know that, that there might be some slight change. So, I don't know if that's going to be an issue for you or not. We don't know, but it, because he gave me, he gave me the, the bids a month ago, or about three weeks ago, so.
I don't see it being a D-DOT.
No, it won't. But I, I foresee us using the contingencies.
Are they going to be able to do construction without affecting the Riverwalk?
Yep.
Yeah, they can do it safely, yep.
How much do we have from the American Recovery Plan?
We will receive $346,000, I'm sorry, $436,000. We should be receiving our first payment in the next 60 days.
My point being, if it goes over by 10, 15,000, we're not going to.
No, we could, honestly, if that happened, we could use our, our ARP funds.
It's still in need. And at that price, it's a deal from 367.
And if it does go over, I can at least keep you informed.
It's been in need for years, both sides of the river.
Yeah.
And then, Dan, you're good with the maintenance and upkeep? People for that? Well, it's no point in having bathrooms if they're not clean or stopped, you know what I mean?
We would, we would, we would still, we would address that.
Barry?
I have a question. When are they looking to start construction?
July.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. How will that affect our summer concept series?
Shouldn't affect them at all. They'll be able, they're working inside, so this is interior construction. So, they might have to make a, a small area safe so they could work, but it's not going to be like the showboat where you're going to have a large area that was contained.
They have the noisiest thing, they're going to make it down there and suck that, that kind of ground up. That's extremely noisy. And the 10%, that's what we always built into all these projects, but we had the construction companies, so I'm good with all that.
Any other questions for Mike?
I have one.
Okay.
Speaking of the showboat, showboat committee expenditures on said showboat, what's their plan for the insurance? I mean, are, are we insured, is it insured?
It's insured, yeah, yes, yes, I've taken care of that.
And they plan on paying it back, or?
Yeah. Good.
Anytime soon, or is it to be determined?
It might have to be determined, but yes.
Yeah. It'll definitely be after the 501(c)(3) is, is put together and then that committee will say, oh, they'll be paying it whether they want some payments or whatever, I'm just not sure.
Can I ask a controversial question, Salzweedl? What, I mean, why are you so gung-ho about throwing $100,000 at a restroom, but not $36,000 of insurance?
Well, when, when we originally put the budget together, we're looking at $20,000 to pay towards the insurance. So, we always had that part of it. Then we also had $160,000 approximately approved for the bathrooms.
Sure.
And then they came out with the Taj Mahal-style bathrooms and even at that point. So, the committee always knew that there would be some cost. And it's very critical to have bathrooms on that side of the, the river ju, just for the showboat and a lot of other good reasons besides that too. So, that's why the $100,000. And then, as me, being on both committees, I, I always felt that it was still part of the decision possibility to come up with funding in bathrooms as well.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, I'm not opposed to that at all.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see the bathrooms as a showboat thing, I see the bathrooms as a community.
Yes.
It's going to better our community, it's going to make everything, everybody better down here.
So, for them, the $100,000, I thought was pretty, pretty good then too.
Yeah, no, I'm not complaining, I'm not complaining about money. I'm just wondering why they were so gung-ho about bathrooms, but it was such a debate about insurance.
Yep.
That's my only inquiry.
I think the big debate was the total monitoring for the insurance of $35,000 versus the six or seven that we, that we used to pay for and all of a sudden.
Okay.
That's right.
Are they going to be open like eight to eight, or something?
Something of that nature.
Okay.
Just thinking like nine to eight, put a time lock sound like a. Yeah, yeah, we would do the same.
Put our time locks at that clock rate on it, Harv. What's the, you have an old, during the social district down in.
Yeah, you could program them any way you want. I mean, if we have events at the showboat, they go to 11 o'clock, we could set the alarms for that, or set the locks for that.
Yep.
Very easy to do.
Any other questions on the bathroom? Motion to award the restroom construction to Wolverine Building Group.
I make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Alright. Twenty, 21 budget amendments, Mike.
The front of you is a resolution 821, it's your annual budget amendments that we always come to you in, in June. There's a spreadsheet that identifies every line item we changed. I don't know if we need to go through every line item. Some of the big things is, we took in about $273,000 in additional revenue we had budgeted for the year, mainly in part because of the, the biggest item for the, for the CAREZAC grants that we received funding for. We received over $200,000 in, in grants. We also had, we also received about $28,000 for the marijuana excise tax. So, those are the, those are the big contributors to, to additional revenue. Biggest, one of the things you're going to see across throughout all the general, general funds was the $125,000 pension payment we made last year from the, from the fund balance proceeds that we had. It's expensed to this year, even though technically it came, it came out of that, it came out of the fund balance, it still is budgeted to this year's account. So, we, we just, so we had to amend the budget to, to account for that. As I told you before, biggest, the biggest fluctuations for us were the, were the attorney fees, much higher than we anticipated. We also had the police officer situation where we had part-time officer working full-time for six months. That's created a very large increase to our expenditures. And then also, as I've expressed to you before, the data processing fund where we needed to make some, we had to make sure that we didn't drain the account. We had a number of ITEs there. All in all, that, I go through, I mean, if you want me to go through specific lines, I can, but there's a rev, a resolution that does show the amendments, the amendments for each fund in the resolution.
I have one question.
Sure.
I think you said this in a previous meeting, some of the, is the bulk of the extra revenue going to streets?
So, this past year, this past year, what we did was we had, we were about, we had about $200,000 in fund balance at the end of the year, at the end of the year last year. So, we took $125,000 of that put towards the pension. We put $75,000 to the showboat. What we did this year also though, was when we got the marijuana excise tax, we transferred that immediately to local streets.
Okay.
That's what we did.
That's what I remember.
Yep. And my, but the plan would be is whatever we receive in the marijuana excise tax, we would, we would just transfer it to local streets.
Streets. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions for Mike on that resolution? Motion to approve resolution 8-21.
I make that motion.
Support.
Any other questions, discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Riverside Drive street closure.
Yes, we received, received a request from Eric, Eric Barkus to close down Riverside Drive from, I'm sorry, just go ahead.
July 31st.
July 31st. From eight to five, I believe he did this last year. Recommending, recommending road closure presented.
And the other businesses in that area are okay with that? Is the restaurant back open?
Yeah, Barkus is over, or, Backwater is open, so I think they need to be, I was hoping they'd be here this evening, but apparently not. Jeff just got going. Jeff would appreciate not having all the parking taken away. So, I think to accommodate Jeff, he was pretty good, about right there at the end to the dumpster.
Yep.
From there towards Perry's house, shutting that down, that gives him, and then making sure that their vendors stay out of the parking lot back there so that there's, his customers can park there.
The dumpster, right?
Yep.
So, congested.
Yep. So, I mean, we're good with it at our place, you know? So, it was a good event last year, but Jeff's open, so we, he's, it's hard enough to do anything and just reopening, he's struggling, so. That was his, that was his concern.
Well, my sense of the Barkuses, they'd be pretty easy to work with.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're good people, they're stores of cool things.
Yep.
Okay.
That's a cool affair too. You know what, I make the motion of the approval of the road closure for the Weavers.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Alright, ordinance 21-4, east of the Flat River Marijuana.
After a full year of adult-use facilities operating in the city has become a parent and facilities are most suitable in the west-end commercial area, Main Street and Boze Road, which are not 1,000 feet from schools and nursery schools in the downtown district and 500 feet from the downtown district and not residential areas. One area not fully thought of were areas east of the Flat River. There are a few c-free zone parcels on this side of the river and currently are eligible for, for facilities. However, in many instances, they are surrounded by residential units. At the planning commission, on Monday, June 14th, the planning commission had a public hearing on restricting facilities east of the Flat River and made a recommendation to amend the zoning ordinance to restrict facilities east of the Flat River. I've also attached in your memo, the memo from Andy Moore explaining this and the proposed zoning amendment. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council accept the recommendation of the planning commission to amend the zoning ordinance and approved ordinance 2104 is presented.
So, the reason for this need is because of Methodist Church, right? They had a school there, right? They were, that zoned them out of it and it's not open.
Correct. So, the question is, is whether or not you want to restrict east of the river or leave it as is.
Some houses were there.
And you can leave it as is, or you can restrict it.
I, I watched the planning commission. Who introduced this that ended up coming to us? Maybe I missed it on the planning commission, but did it just show up on the agenda, or? Because I noticed there was a public hearing, I didn't see anybody from the neighborhood speaking up. And I thought, okay, well, who made this an issue? How to get on the agenda?
Yeah, there was nobody, I mean, for, against, none.
Right. If you recall, we did have individual conversations about it.
Right.
Well, it got on the agenda because it became available when, I don't know who the catalyst of it was, but it became eligible once the, that was. We never talked about it before.
It was, it was, it was discussion.
A thousand feet it out.
It was discussion with staff to bring it to you and, and really, so, I mean, staff, after, you know, I had obviously one-on-one conversations with all of you, it sensed like it was something that you may want to consider. So, as staff, Andy and myself, and Jessica presented it.
I was also kind of surprised that, number one, to my understanding, there's somebody that purchased a property in that end of town that wants to open a facility, that they were not at the meeting, nor was any mention made of the fact that there already was somebody interested in doing it, unless I, I don't think I missed it, I watched.
I mean, the, the public hearings set forth on zoning and enabling act were filed, so it was noticed. That is the city's obligation, and so the city did meet their obligation.
Right.
So, for me, I'm kind of displeased how this went down. I feel like we did have individual conversations. I'm, I'm fine with us having a zoned area where these dispensaries can go in, right? I'm, I'm fine with that. I think that, that puts pressure on them to, to go against each other and two to three years' time, there will be less of them. And, but the, so, okay, so let's talk about the east side of the river. What's our reasoning that we don't want them on the east side of the river? Well, if we want them all to be congested so they have to compete, that's fine with me. But what I'm understanding now is that we knew that somebody who made sure that a certain space was eligible for this type of business, they made sure that it was eligible, they bought it on the idea that it was eligible and now we're going to change it on them once they bought it and they're starting with, trying to start restorations on it? That's where I, if, if we want to put a limit on it with that exception, I'm more open to that. I, I think not telling somebody kind of, or giving people, being, making them privy to all of the information is important.
As somebody who opened a business with what at the time was our nest egg, if I had proceeded thinking I'm going to open a business and then the city council said, oh, hey, we decided we don't want any jewelry stores on Main Street, I don't know.
You can understand that there's a pattern difference, right? Between a jewelry store and a marijuana facility in the middle of the neighborhood.
I got it, but if, if we were aware that that building was purchased with that intent and it wasn't even mentioned by staff or anyone at the meeting, I thought it was kind of duplicitous. One of the main motivators for us not putting any limits, I mean, I've had to answer that question 672 times in my store. Why are there so many? Because we don't want to get sued. So, are we not setting ourselves up for a lawsuit on this? Where's the attorney?
Right. We're here. How do attorneys stay in line?
I think you're all aware of the analysis that, the discussions we've had relating to taking claims and so forth and how this work, works. So, my understanding is that this was considered as a planning commission out of concern for the entire residential area, not just with regard focusing on one property that, that might have been qualified for this use prior to this amendment. In other words, I don't think it was focused on an individual owner. My understanding is that, once the buffer was removed, the concern was that, oh, wow, you could have several of these applications right in the heart of a residential area, and that was the concern. So, more of a big-picture policy decision, not focused on an individual, you know, property owner. Furthermore, as Mike stated, and I wasn't at the planning commission, Andy Moore was there and guided them through this process and so forth, but it was, it was posted and the public hearing took place and everything was in accordance with the statute. And I don't know if that individual was there or not. Sounds like they weren't. Let's speak one way or another.
They were, they didn't say anything.
But I don't think any information was withheld for what it was worth.
No, no, the information's been withheld.
I don't.
So, this is a policy decision.
We're focusing on one building, this ordinance is east of the Flat River, which is the size of this section of town, mostly residential. And there's opportunity of found on that side of the traffic light. I don't, I just don't, I don't know.
There, there was one thing that, that I read, and I'm going to read it now. In other words, the land can still be used for a whole range of other uses and otherwise maintain its value, even if limited from the marijuana use. I don't find that to be a true statement. I don't believe that a piece of land is, is worth the same as if you put a pizza rita in there or if you put this marijuana shop in there. The marijuana shop is going to be, raise that value of that property. So, I quite didn't read it that way in that section.
From a buyer's standpoint, maybe, like property values are high, but what?
But, but if I bought it with the speculation that it was going to be a marijuana facility and I paid an extra $50,000 knowing that, that value is, I will not get $50,000 if it's going to become a pizzeria. It's a risk-reward thing of speculating. And, and I do believe that we on this council knew long before this that it was going to be used as a marijuana facility. I don't think any of us did not know that from conversations.
I don't, we're getting back to one particular piece of property.
Well, but there's, there's five other ones that would, would fall under this, this umbrella, not just the one, but all the other five. Well, but there's, there's five other ones that would, would fall under this, this umbrella, not just the one, but all the other five. So, so they, if they decided, I want to sell that because I want to make some money, they, they could not sell that. The, the value would not be the same. So we're controlling the value of the property, we as the city councils, that's what I feel. We are controlling the value of a property, and I don't think that's our job. It should be a free enterprise market for what property values are worth, regardless of business or what. And, and I think with this, we're, we're controlling the value. And I don't think it's right for us. And another thing that is, I, I, I don't know what we did, I know we followed all the rules for the planning commission, we put it on the agenda, but did we send something out to the residents in that area to let them know that this was a potential and so they could come and speak on their behalf, whether they were for or against it? Did the gentleman that, that owns that building or any other buildings said, hey, by the way, we're gonna restrict this from Larkins? Not Larkins, but?
We notified for a public hearing, so you said same every single time.
Right, this, this didn't require a three-hundred-foot notice.
Okay, okay, okay.
No, they did not. We met the requirement by posting in the newspaper record, which we did.
So sitting on planning, when nobody shows up, Connor wasn't here, no neighbors, no, nothing. I think the board, and this is just me personally, that they didn't, they didn't care, uh, as far as I know, Connor may, may or may not have had the money to, to continue on. So, when nobody shows up and nobody, you guys were here, and nobody says boo about nothing except for the astronomer that said that they had really good lighting at the dealership, that was, that was the only comment we had.
Also, it's not discount what the planning commission has done for us on the marijuana front since day one. They owe, in my opinion. So I have a lot of, there's a lot of value in a recommendation from the planning commission because this marijuana thing, I would argue it's the most after-mating homework you guys have done on any of it.
It takes a lot of our time.
Yeah, Barry.
And are there any other sections of town that fall under the same criteria as the east side of the state? Is there any other heavy residential areas? Cause if you look at the one right next to Valley Vista, that is a heavy area of residence, but apparently there, we, we didn't care cause it was on the west side of the river and it was past that. So, the trailer park, that is a heavy, that, that do want it just open.
Dense population versus.
Do you want the trailer park not a dense population?
No, I said the dense.
It is, okay.
I'm, I'm saying rather than fifteen houses spread out around over here, you got, what do they got in there?
So.
Hundred and fifty?
So, if, if we make this resolution, are we covering other places we don't have to come back in four months because we forgot something? Because now somebody else wants it? Do we have it all covered?
I don't, it's, I don't think that we forgot. I think that nobody thought that the Methodist Church, School and Daycare were not gonna be in existence anymore.
So that was our only thing.
We talked about it at the beginning about.
So we voted that that nursery would just save our butts for the east side of the river?
I don't think it saved our butts, I think it was zoned out because of the thousand-foot rule, and it wasn't necessary to have a.
So, I'm not, it's, to me, it's not east side, west side. We're all wool, right? And, and we needed to look at this as all of wool. So it's not that I don't want them on the east side of the river, and it's not that I want them on the west side of the river. It's not my choice, I have to vote from the best interest of all citizens and what I think benefits our city. I think it's terribly unfair to take a person who, who waited, found out something was eligible, asked if something was eligible, told them yes, they purchased it with the intent of making this, this business there. And now because it's in front of us, and you say you keep going back to this one building when it's all of the, the east side of the river, but it's in front of us because of that one building.
It's in front of us because of the planning commission, but I was zoning amendment for an entire area.
But they wouldn't have done that if nobody was buying that and trying to protect the dispensary.
Yeah, on a plan, I don't know what else.
That's why I was trying to find out who brought it to the planning commission, and apparently it just dropped from space.
It was on the agenda. Barry.
Yeah, but not.
I did it, so, so I, I.
How did this end up on the agenda? Borough Larkis is on the agenda because they said, hey, will you close the street for us again this year? So we put it on the agenda.
Clip, to, to explain, I had individual conversations with council members explaining the situation.
So you put it on the agenda?
Yes, I did.
Why didn't you just say that ten minutes ago?
You don't, you're not doing this every time.
Oh, okay.
We can talk and have a debate without screaming at.
Uh, pardon me for raising my voice. Why didn't you answer my question?
I did.
Ten minutes, no, you didn't.
Yes, I did, cause you said who did it, I said staff.
All right, Barry, that's enough. Barry.
Uh, Perry Beecham, again, reside at nine twenty-four Riverside Drive. Um, I'm kind of siding with Leah, or I, I commend the council and, uh, the, and I've said this before, and the, uh, planning commission because the public voted to have it, and, and you did what the public, I was always brought up, you did what the public asked, asked you to. Um, I, I'm gonna say, I've never used marijuana in my life, um, but I, I view it now as the same as alcohol. Um, you can't drink and drive, you can't, uh, use marijuana and drive, you know, be under the influence. Uh, uh, I've been exposed a little bit because my daughter lives in Denver, and when we're, when we travel out there, we see the stores. Um, what I see here in Lowell, I, I don't see the, the, when it first came up, the issue of, oh, we're gonna have armed guys and we're gonna have the derelicts of the world hanging out here. I, I've not seen that. All I've seen is improvement to the buildings here in, on Main Street and in Lowell. The same thing what I've seen out in Denver. Um, there typically the cannabis shops are the nicest looking and the most well-maintained facilities in, in the neighborhoods, uh, out in Denver, and the same thing that I see here, you know, and I'm just gonna throw in, and I know it's, it's worked well. I look at, again, I'm comparing it to alcohol, and, and I don't see the city limiting, um, what the hours of operation for Big Boiler or New Union or, or Larkin, anybody that's serving alcohol, you know, they can serve till two in the morning, you know, till two in the morning. Um, and again, the planning commission has put restrictions, um, of what time they can do business. You know, again, for me, uh, I just compare it to the same as alcohol. And I just think that what's on the west side should, if, if it's in the planning commission right now, um, that, that it could be on the east side, um, I, I'm kind of like, so be it. Again, I, I view them as some of the nicest, um, and the, the owners, the people are putting money back into the facilities as compared to having empty storefronts here in Lowell. So, thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Uh, my name is, I'll move this up, sorry. Name is Brad Brohart, uh, reside at six twenty, uh, six forty Shepherd Drive. I work at six twenty-one Bismann, uh, here on the east side, and, uh, also a pastor at Lowell United Methodist Church. And I just wanna put it in my position is that I would, uh, I would support this ordinance, um, that we not have any, um, facilities on the east side of the river as a resident. And, um, just wanted to let you know that, and, um, some members of my church would support that also. And members in my community would prefer not to have, um, that kind of commercial enterprise in the community. Uh, I think the age for purchase of marijuana is twenty-one, is that correct?
Yep.
So it is a store that, um, probably is not best put into a community area. And, uh, I, I just, um, I just don't support, um, those stores coming in on this side. We have what we need over there, we have a plethora of what we need already, and the issue is of one person who, I don't know where that is, may intend to purchase that, but there are others in the community who do not want such a facility in their community, so you can weigh those two against each other if you want to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Connor Baker. I am the, I own the property at eight oh five and eight twenty-five East Main Street. For the past several years, I've been working hard to open up a marijuana retail establishment in Lowell. Recently, I purchased the property at eight oh five and eight twenty-five East Main Street in good faith after speaking to city manager Mike Burns, who confirmed that the property was now eligible for a marijuana establishment after the closing of a daycare nearby. I've had multiple conversations regarding the ordinance and my property while putting together my application and have not been notified of any potential problem or desire to not allow a marijuana establishment at my location. I have since placed a large down payment on the mortgage and have paid significant amounts in state fees and lawyer fees to become pre-approved, which is one of the requirements to submit an application to the city. Upon preapproval from the state, I hired an architect to complete the required documents needed to submit an application. I am approximately one week away from being able to submit an application to the city. I was not made aware of the most recent planning meeting regarding this amendment or tonight's agenda until a friend reached out this morning. I would like to point out a few things. It appears that this amendment, twenty-one dash zero four, would affect three parcels, two of those being mine and one being an already established business. This would essentially be an amendment blocking my properties from what I'm understanding. City planning consultant Andy Moore stated that the commercial properties would, that would be affected by this are completely surrounded on all sides by residential use, which I believe would be factually incorrect and may have affected the outcome of a vote to send this to council in the first place. If you are not familiar with eight oh five and eight twenty-five East Main Street, they are two commercial lots side by side with, also with a road that circles the two properties, essentially being its own city block. Furthermore, the property was most recently a bar, which begs the question, why allow alcohol sales and consumption at this location but block the sales of marijuana, which have been proven to be medicinal? I am not a big corporation, I am a small contender that has put most of what I have into this project. Tonight, I would like to request that the council either completely reject this amendment or send this amendment back to the planning commission, asking for a limited number of establishments east of the river instead of blocking them altogether. Thank you.
I have a question that I'll ask in a moderated tone. Are there five properties that could be marijuana facilities, or three, or?
My understanding east of the Flat River, there were six, C-3 properties.
And he has two of them?
I didn't realize he had two, I, the, I do the role, but he has one property.
I, I did two up until four minutes ago.
Going back to the council, I mean, regardless of what you voted, this, this issue was gonna come to you one way or another, so, I mean, my, my conversations with staff or that, or with council members, and what I gather, I sensed that you wanted to have this conversation here, and I explained the process to it and the process that, that we had.
I would never fault you for bringing something to us or anybody else fault you for bringing the topic to us.
Yeah, I just, I mean.
Especially when the planning commission's already done this work, because then what do we tell them? Oh, thanks for all the work, but we're not even talking about it. It's a waste of time.
And I know during our conversation with Mike, there were, there was a lot of conversations about me going one way or the other, whether, whether we wanted to have another blighted piece of property, uh, outside your residential that, that may never happen, or here's an opportunity to gain more tax dollars and so, so, I mean, it was back and forth. It wasn't like we didn't have a, a good conversation about it and bring it to our attention.
And, and I think the other thing is, is knowing that this property, had we not addressed this in this matter, had this property gone, we might have had more backlash from the community, cause it happened. Now that you've actually had the opportunity to address it, whatever position you take, you take.
Any other discussion on this? Does anybody want to make a motion for ordinance twenty-one dash four? Dead on, right. Twenty-one dash five, special event licenses.
When proposal one of twenty eighteen was approved by the state, by the people of the state of Michigan to allow for adult use marijuana facilities in Michigan, the act allowed for microprocessors, provisioning centers, grow facilities, secure transporters, and safety compliance facilities to operate. When this, when the Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency drafted their initial rules in twenty nineteen, they allowed for special events, permits, and designated consumption facilities. Our current ordinance recognizes these exist. However, our ordinance does not allow for consumption at facilities. If you recall, when we drafted, first drafted the ordinance, administration had concern about allowing designated consumption facilities in the city. This is why the consumption clause to our ordinance was added. We occasionally receive phone calls from entities interested in having special events and orders designated consumption facilities. After discussing this with the city attorney, there may be some ambiguity with our ordinance pertaining to this. The city or, attorney has drafted ordinance twenty-one dash oh five as an addendum to section twenty-eight dash twenty-one of the city ordinance outright banning designated consumption establishments, excess marijuana growers, marijuana event organizers, temporary marijuana events, or any other future licenses by the state. This further clarifies the city's position on these facilities, and I recommend the Lowell City Council approve ordinance twenty-one dash oh five as presented.
Hi, David, it was a thing that you could do.
I have a couple of questions. What is an excess marijuana grower?
That actually, um, allows them to grow more than the underlying license permit that they got initially. So just to be clear, these special licenses were created after the statute came out. So, some of us had already adopted ordinances, and then, um, the state came out with these special licenses. So they're just starting, you're starting to see requests for these types of events, primarily these special events like Cash Bash and Man Arbor, if you're familiar with that, um, and so forth. And so, um, again, this, your ordinance didn't really anticipate these clearly, and so this gives you the opportunity to discuss whether these are things you want to allow or not. And this particularly would prohibit them until you, you know, unless and until you change your mind again.
Yeah, when we were putting all that together, the state was changing its mind weekly, and it was literally a nightmare to get through it, and it took forever, but, um, like Jessica said, that was never, they weren't allowing that then, and now they are, so.
But wasn't that part of our discussion was like, when all these people were against it, and we all said, well, they're just taking it home and they're, you know, picking it up and leaving. I've always assumed that you really consume on sight, and I wouldn't think any differently.
If she has a designated driver?
If you.
Well, there's a way to test for alcohol, there's, working on a way to test for it.
If you recall, we did, when, when we first did this ordinance, we did mention the concern about these, this consumption facilities, because I remember immediately after the proposal one was passed, there was a place up in the U.P. that supposedly already operated as a.
Illegally.
And didn't they fake a cigar club or something and pay for a membership, and then there was a special cigar club event?
So, so.
Which is genius.
We, when we drafted our ordinance, we made it that there was no consumption allowed in the facility. Um, so, but our ordinance also recognized.